This is episode 623 of the Rio Grande Foundation's Tipping Point, New Mexico. I'm Paul Gessing.
And I'm Wally Drangmeister.
I'm president of the Rio Grande Foundation, New Mexico's free market think tank. You can find out more about the foundation at rio grandefoundation.org. Well, Wally, it's been a few weeks since we sat down together, you and I, to discuss the weekly news of New Mexico, normally Fourth of July week among the quietest months or quietest times of the of the calendar year.
Quiet politically, not fireworks so much.
That's true. That's true. But only so much you can say about the old fireworks. And of course, happy birthday to United States, a little belated. The big thing is that apparently all heck broke loose. Well, not all heck broke loose. It for sure did. I would say that we've had a couple of the most momentous two weeks in American history here since we last spoke. First and foremost, of course, the debate which made.
The debate heard around the world.
Yeah, they say political debates don't matter. Well, I think this one did. It does. Joe Biden, of course, don't have to recap too much, but he had the, he was the mopey. He had the floor mopped with him by Donald Trump in the debate and raised some serious questions about his mental acuity. Then we, of course, had the assassination attempt on Donald Trump just this past weekend. The upshot is that as the Republicans meet in Milwaukee, Wisconsin for their convention, polling data are showing very broad upsurge for President Trump and the Republicans. That was before the assassination attempt. One can only imagine that that attempt only further solidifies President Trump's political standing and the tailwinds that he has in terms of political momentum. And we're at a position where he just chose his vice presidential candidate JD Vance. And Wally, I definitely interested in your thoughts, but this seems to me to be a very confident Trump pick here for VP. He's not checking any boxes. He's not putting an African American in there or a woman or Hispanic. He's picking somebody based on who he feels will carry on the Trumpian legacy within the Republican Party because of course Donald Trump cannot run again for president. He has the opportunity though, to put a vice presidential candidate in place who will potentially, very potentially run for the presidency in four years in 2028. And if that happens, carry forth the legacy of the Trump agenda into the future. And so that's a sign to me that Trump is pretty confident that he's in good shape for this election and that he wants to solidify his legacy.
Yes. And then, you know, Paul, the thing JD Vance, he's not even 40 years old, you know, when we are in the midst of a geriatric leadership in Washington, broadly speaking, really in all branches of government, you know, there are not many spring chickens in leadership positions, certainly not in the White House or Congress or the Supreme Court. So it'll be interesting. And he JD Vance also, speaking of a confident choice, wasn't always the biggest Trump fan if the news reports. And he maybe came around to that. So yes, a very interesting choice. And also he has a beard. I don't know. They always used to say, you know, they make a big deal out of it. You can't win an election with the beard. Well, you know, the, the vice president is usually extremely important for like three days, and then it just kind of goes into the background. This time I do think more so than most because Biden is set the perception and you know, in my, my thought reality, Biden is so weakened in terms of his mental acuity. The vice presidential debate from the D side will be a lot more looked at in terms of Kamala Harris. But yeah, we will, we will see how this goes. I'm sure they'll take some shots at him and it'll be interesting to see the vice president debate. And after that, I have a feeling that's the last we'll hear much about it in until the election. And you didn't ask, but I'm going to say, I think Biden's in it till the end. I mean, I agree. Yeah, there's a, if he was going to get out, he would have already gotten out. And so, you know, Paul, you have to have a, to be, to run for president and to be president, you have to have a certain level of self-confidence that, that is not common in most people. And I think Biden has that in abundance, whether it's justified or not. I think that's irrelevant to him. He's got it and I think he's in.
Well, a lot to unpack here still. First and foremost, the fact that Biden seems to be taking his advice from Jill, Dr. Jill and Hunter Biden.
As they say, you know, a man not known for his good decision making.
But also two people who have very much enjoyed benefits from the proverbial coattails of being very tightly in with the president of the United States. Jill Biden clearly enjoys the Vogue covers and being the first lady and the trappings thereof, whereas Hunter has certainly benefited from the financial aspect as well as the legal, you know, niceties given to him by being the president's son. Let's see. So on one hand JD Vance shifting gears. He is young. He does turn 40 on August 2nd, 1984, sorry, in 2024. So he's not far. But that is impressive. His book Hillbilly Elegy is absolutely worth a read. I don't know if you've read it. I have. It's worth, worth a read. Maybe I'll grab you a copy. The thing about that particular book, which of course he wrote, he, he, like me, were both Ohio guys, although very different cultural milieus of the places that we spent our time. They're just, it's too complicated to get into, but you know, his book really gets into some of that. Very smart guy. He will mop the floor with Kamala Harris in a debate if that actually happens. Not a free market doctrinaire advocate. I wish he was more pro free trade. I have concerns about spending with both him and Trump in, in the White House. I just, you know, I do think that he is, he is the younger version in many ways ideologically of Donald Trump. And so he will carry on that vision into the future. Definitely do check out that book or I'll bring you a copy of that. But I'm talking to our listeners out there. And speaking of which, I embarked upon a family vacation back to Cincinnati, Ohio, where I was born and spent most of my youth, had a great trip back there, got to see Hannibal, Missouri and do some Mark Twain related activity back there. Then we went to Springfield, Illinois, did the Lincoln Library. And on our way back, went to the Oklahoma City bombing site and museum, which is an excellent place to check out if you're over in Oklahoma City. We are coming up on the 30th anniversary of that particular dark day and event in American history, which is April of 2025 will be that 30th anniversary. So yeah, it's kind of fun to be back there and kind of connect ironically JD Vance and Vivek Ramaswamy, both Southwest Ohio ties there for, for those two gentlemen. So.
And Paul, as you've pounded out, pointed out before, there is a lot of ties to Ohio for national leadership in the history of these United States far. So.
Absolutely. Not the least of which is that William Howard Taft was the president who signed New Mexico into statehood. So where does this all leave us? Because I think if you'd asked, or we talked about it before the debate, we would have said that Trump is probably looking at a small lead, which is relatively unique for the elections that Trump has run in. He's tended to, well, in the 2016 election, lost the popular votes, won the Electoral College against Hillary Clinton. Then he lost both to Biden in a very close race in 20. Now he was pre-debate, looking at a small margin of victory on the popular vote and a pretty good chance in the Electoral College, no guarantees. But now I think it's safe to say that this election is Trump's to lose. He is moving in the right direction and it's just hard to envision a situation where Joe Biden suddenly, and I agree with you, I think he's in it to win it or lose it in the case of, of Joe Biden, but he is not giving up. And this assassination attempt and kind of the ever shifting media cycle has taken a lot of pressure off of him, at least publicly. I'm sure there's people still behind the scenes trying to move him out of this, out of this race. But I think there's also a realism in the Democratic Party that they're saying, well, we're going to take our medicine and it's going to be a tough race, which obviously this is a New Mexico podcast that we care most deeply about what happens in New Mexico politics and political issues. So, you know, Nella Domenici has to be thinking that she's in a very solid position to win the US Senate race. I mean, beating an incumbent, a well-funded entrenched incumbent is not going to be easy, but she's certainly got a fighter's chance. And then in the legislative races, all 112 of those folks are up. I've got to think that Republicans are hopeful that they can pick up, you know, maybe five or six seats in the House, maybe three or four in the Senate. And, and that mitigates and exceeds what happened in the primaries. So we could go from a position where the legislature was further tilting to the left to the Democratic Party's further tilting to the left, whereas New Mexico's legislature is moving in a more conservative direction. Now, this is all speculative, but that is my prognostication at this point here in mid-July as we move into November.
Well, as you look at it, you know, New Mexico went from being a solid D state with Biden and everyone else to being in much of the polling a toss-up state, which that, the fact that it's even considered, you know, a purple state or one that, that Republicans could win, that's a pretty stunning. And then the other thing, as you say, on a New Mexico basis, you know, the slide to the left at the legislature in terms of not only the number of Democrats, but the number of highly progressive Democrats has been a trend that just is, the last couple of elections, there's been hope by many that that would slow down, but hope was not realized. And so is this going to be the one where it might turn around and go the other way a little bit? We'll have to wait and see. But you know, I'm, I feel a little bit like Charlie Brown and Lucy's been holding the football, you know, and just when you think you're going to kick it through and maybe get a couple of more moderate Ds or a few more Republicans at the state legislature during the election, it gets pulled back the other way. So, but the signs are there that it could happen. And believe me, for the past many elections, you know, particularly in the Obama era, but you know, even Biden, there were some strong coattails there. There was no hesitancy about voting for the presidential Democratic candidate, and that just carried through to the bottom of the ticket. Well, now there's some question at the top. And if you question at the top, a lot of times that does flow down into the rest of the ballot.
And it is worth noting, since we've spent a lot of time discussing national issues and how they pertain to New Mexico, Robert F. Kennedy Jr. has made the ballot here in New Mexico. I don't know where things stand across the country, but you have got to look at that, you know, especially again, in the wake of the assassination attempt, the Republican Party and, you know, moderates who are at least not anti-Trumpers, but even some who were previously anti-Trumpers, I think will answer the bell for the former president. Bobby Kennedy could siphon off some potential Democrat voters who would otherwise be going for Biden, just because Bobby Kennedy has that heritage, that name, his positions are heterodox, to say the least, but the fact that he's on the ballot in New Mexico. And it'd be interesting to see if he is able to get into one of these debates that would be coming up, assuming that those debates in fact do happen, which I think is an open question, but very interesting that Kennedy has at least gained ballot access here in New Mexico and what that could mean.
Yeah. And, you know, we have elections and we count the votes. That's the official. But you know, there is, everyone knows there is no chance for him to win any state, including New Mexico. But you know, does he get one or 2%? Does he get three, four, five? Does he get close to 10? And if so, where do those voters for Kennedy come from? Would they have come from Biden or whoever the Ds have, or it would have come from the Trump Vance side? Going to be very interesting to see because yeah, there's been some, in the, in my lifetime, quite a few third party candidates that have thrown a wrench into things, although this one seems less likely than most because it seems to me, most of the things I read, he draws voters from both the Democrats and the Republicans. It's not clearly one way or the other in big, big numbers. So.
Well, I'm going to disagree with you.
Okay, go ahead.
Simply for the fact that.
And let me say in, in swing states.
Right. I'm going to say that because of the passionate, what we have here, and I think is going to resonate on election day, you know, it's, it's different. It's one thing to go and tell a pollster that you support one candidate or the other. It's another thing to actually show up and go vote. And I think the passion is at 11 for the Republicans, whereas it's maybe at a three or a four for the Democrats. And I think that maybe Kennedy's not going to take large numbers away from Biden, but I do think that to the extent that people are willing to go vote on the liberal side, they're maybe going to choose Kennedy just because they, they don't support where Biden is trying to take this country and his lack of mental acuity and whatnot. So I think if I was picking sides, I think Kennedy probably does help Trump marginally in a state like New Mexico. Yeah, we'll see.
Yeah, we will see. That is going to be, that is going to be very interesting, although definitely a side note, the other, the other issue when it comes to, you know, how votes break is, you know, they make independents to be this monolithic thing and they are not. There are Democratic leaning independents and there are Republican leaning, leaning independents, and it's going to be a question. And as you rightly said, who comes out to vote? That always is the big thing. So which group is more fired up and feels like they have more to gain that are not your regular voters, you know, which is not as large a percentage as many people would like to see. There's a lot that come out when they feel fired up and when they don't, they don't. And it's going to be, it's going to be interesting in New Mexico. But to have some of these races in play in New Mexico is a, a pretty, pretty stunning thing compared to what we've seen in the past many presidential cycles here in our state.
And one more thing on this, to the extent that there is reform in government as a result of this assassination attempt, Secret Service is definitely going to be under the spotlight. I, as somebody who looks at incentives as they pertain to government and sees government as a broadly speaking, a failing entity because of the lack of incentives to do their job. And I'm looking at you, education system. The Secret Service is in a similar boat in a much higher stakes situation. And clearly there were some massive, massive failures with regard to the Trump assassination, allowing this individual to scale and get up on a roof and relatively unmolested fire shots at the President of the United States. I don't know what it means for the future of the Secret Service. Government has a long, long track record of massively screwing up and not having any significant changes undertaken to the, to the government entity that screwed up.
Declare victory and go home and do what we've been doing. But yeah, that's a good point. And then the other thing, Paul, yes, talk about shortcomings is that they finally gave Kennedy Secret Service protection. And for those of you who have not been alive during the last 50, 60 years, you might want to Google Kennedy assassinations. I was shocked that they didn't have him under Secret Service protection, but now they know politically, there's just no excuse for, for that. So I'm, I, that bothered me at a personal level, not politically. It's like, man, why wouldn't you give that guy Secret Service protection? You know, so.
Yeah, very, very concerning there. Regarding our congressional delegation, but on a specific issue, the Democrats in Washington and the House specifically, including each of New Mexico's representatives, Gabe Vasquez, Legere Fernandez and Stansbury, all voted against requiring proof of US citizenship to be able to vote in federal elections. This is an issue that's broadly speaking, 81% supported by Americans. And it's just absolutely mind blowing that you wouldn't have a requirement that you prove you're a US citizen in order to be able to vote in those federal elections. Not a lot to be said here. It's voter ID has been an issue. Election integrity has been an issue, not just since Trump got elected, but since at least 2020 or 2000, I should say. There was more concerns about the ballots themselves, but there was a lot of questions about election integrity back in the year 2000, Bush versus Gore. It's the SAVE Act is the bill, S A V E. And this is yet another election issue that you have to look at and just say, I can't believe that there was no willingness on the Democratic side, even in a very vulnerable race like Gabe Vasquez is facing, to just say, yes, you have to show proof of citizenship to register to vote. Like that is something, this, this is not a bill that's going to go through the US Senate because it is controlled by Democrats and they're not inclined to support this policy. But it shows you where, where these folks are ideologically.
Yeah. And then, you know, I've seen polling, not recently on this, but when I, when I saw it is voter ID is a pretty popular issue on both sides of the aisle. Yeah, it's big. So, you know, the people who are against it, they're doing so for overtly political reasons. So, and I think it's beyond the point of even breaking down. And believe me, I tend to not break down many things along race or ethnicity. But I think that, I think broadly across ethnicities, it breaks down to we think voter ID is a good idea because we don't think people ought to be able to sneak in the country and vote, you know, and there's a lot of talk about voter integrity and, you know, kind of these scary things that maybe foreign governments are doing with social media. But who votes is important. And I do think that this is one that, yeah, it may not be the biggest issue practically in the world, but man, if you can't even be for that, what, what does that say about your beliefs with regard to what it means to be an American and what it means to have election integrity?
Yeah. And of course there's claims that this is already illegal. Well, the rejoinder to that is that a lot of these people are here illegally in the first place. So laws do get broken, but you might want to mitigate against those laws being broken in further ways with this kind of protection. But now we get to Wally, the special session, which kicks off on Thursday. If you haven't already seen it, I sat down with House Minority Leader Rod Montoya to discuss the issues here. This is one of those so far, six years into her administration, rare issues where the governor and the progressives in the legislature are not at all on the same page. 41 Democrat leaning, progressive leaning groups, starting with the ACLU, sent a letter to the governor and legislative leaders saying to just call off the session. The governor's moving forward with it. There definitely is Republican questioning of the session, but my view is if there's policy progress to be made, join up and sing kumbaya together and let's get something done, even if we may wonder where the governor was the last six years and wonder why a special session is required right now as we speak to do this. But if there's prospects of progress here in this session, let's get it done.
Yes. And, you know, it is, this is, you know, there are truisms and one of the truisms of special sessions is you don't hold one unless there's broad agreement and a narrow focus that you can likely get things done. And it looks like perhaps the governor overestimated the amount of influence you would have to get this legislation through because there's a lot going on. And to your point, Paul, some of these proposals are very similar to ones that have been proposed by Republicans over many legislative sessions. Bill Ream has put forth a similar legislation to some of these proposals over the years, but because it came from him, it was just poo-pooed, never see the light of the day. But we now are seeing, and it'll be interesting to see more as we're seeing not only, we're not seeing a break between Ds and Rs, we're seeing a break between the very progressive elements of the legislature and everybody else. And so it will be interesting to see how that goes because the game, the only game in town has been that if you don't provoke, vote with the progressive ideals, we will, we will run a primary candidate against you. And so this is one where if you vote for this legislation, it's against the progressive ideals. So we'll see if that holds true as well. And given all of this, I still think it's possible. And I used to, I thought it was a maybe a five or 10% chance. Now that's creeping up from my, for me personally, my prognostication, it's not impossible that we have the five minute special legislative session where they call to order and then just say, no, we're not doing this. And that is a possibility that's still on the table, given the kind of chaos that's surrounding these proposed legislative items.
Well, let's go through them real quick. And, you know, we're not a crime oriented think tank. I will say at the outset that nothing being put forth in the session is on its face objectionable to free market conservatives. I don't think it's objectionable to Republicans. I didn't get the impression that Rod Montoya was philosophically opposed to any of these concepts.
I don't think it's maybe progressive or to moderate Democrats probably don't find many of these things offensive.
So first is criminal competency to amend state law to require judges dealing with mentally incompetent defendants charged with certain violent felonies who have found, been found mentally incompetent twice in one year to advise the DA to consider initiating a petition for civil commitment. So, I mean, how effective that'll be, I don't know. And I think that's where Republicans are concerned, but I don't find anything objectional there. Involuntary commitment would expand the definition of criteria that can be considered by a judge for civil commitment. Median safety, so getting people off of street median, medians. Now, the width is 36 inches wide and highway exit and entrance ramp. So I don't know how effective that would be, but certainly.
And there are, Paul, there are panhandlers right now or people begging for money, whatever the proper term is, on those narrow medians in Albuquerque, right under the sign that says that that's illegal according to city ordinance.
Right. And a lot of this does involve enforcement and that's the trick of getting the city, you know, government mayor Kellard to actually enforce the law. Felon in possession of a firearm would increase penalties and also law enforcement data, requiring law enforcement agencies to report to the State Department of Public Safety, certain crime data and ballistics information. Now, I think these are at worst. I think these are at worst ineffective. At best they are common sense, basic ideas that seem like something that everybody in Santa Fe should be supportive of. So I find the opposition of the progressive left wing groups to be a little bit of overreach. Maybe this is a situation, kind of like, you know, Corey DeAngelis describes with the, the unions during COVID, the lockdowns where they just overplay their hand. But obviously we'll see how the special session goes. What if any agreements is struck between the governor and the progressive Democrats and the Republicans? And it's going to be fascinating to watch. I think if the, if the leadership, if Speaker of the House Martinez and Peter Worth, if you can satisfy those true progressives, the Republicans won't really have much to say on either side. I think the Democrats will rally to those people, but those are two of the staunchest progressive Democrats. And I don't know about signy die right when they get there, but it certainly isn't. It wouldn't be outside the realm of possibility.
Yeah, yeah. And like I say, when I first started hearing that, I thought, no way. But now it's like, depending on what the level of frustration is. And then the other issue, Paul, is like, are there, I mean, this is, this is a legit question is, I do know that there are some Democrats that are much more moderate than the wild eyed progressives that many are positions that many take in Santa Fe. But are there enough of them to even matter? And are they so afraid of the primary juggernaut that they would even be encouraged to vote their consciences as opposed to saying, I don't want to lose my seat over this. So there's a lot going on there and you know, it is interesting that some of the quote moderates of today are the same people that, you know, a decade ago were considered relatively far left on certain issues, but they're kind of the, they're kind of the safety net against the most craziest of legislation. But in this case, it's the exact opposite of what we usually have. We usually have very progressive legislation that the moderates and the Republicans are trying to kill. In this case, we have some kind of moderate legislation that as is the progressives want to kill. So it is a strange one indeed. So the sides are playing different roles than they're used to playing legislatively.
Now, just kind of going at this from a political perspective, you mentioned a Joe Monahan blog post where she had a luncheon in advance of the special session for, I, I think Democrats, I don't know if it was just Democrats. But she was getting them together around the table. And the only one who showed up was Daniel Ivey Soto. Of course, Ivey Soto was one of many Democrats on election night. It's worth noting that these legislators who will show up in Santa Fe are not relating to the election, the primary election in June. These are the legislators who showed up in the 30 day session at the beginning of this year, Daniel Ivey Soto.
Yeah, they're still legislators, legislators until the end, until the end of the year, unless they resign. And so.
Ivey Soto lost his seat, but he will be there for the special session. In fact, he's the only one who showed up at the governor's luncheon, sat around a very large table for lunch. I don't know, there's probably 20 or 30 seats at this table. Ivey Soto in this photo is seen smiling all by himself, which you know, Ivey Soto lost, of course, he was targeted by the progressives, but to lose as an incumbent legislator, 80 to 20, and for him to be the only one that the governor gets to show up. And the fact that the governor supported a lot of the progressive winners in the primary election to begin with, it's almost like she's creating her own demise by moving the Democratic Party further and further to the left. So it's baffling, but this is quite a picture and something that's pretty humorous if you check it out. So.
You know, Paul, for me, this, the kind of a situation you set up is kind of the fact is stranger than fiction. You know, you kind of write that into a politic, a work of political fiction. People would say, oh, none of that could ever happen. And yet here we are in New Mexico. But the point you made is that yes, has the governor supported the progressive candidates to the point where they are a force onto themselves that have no need nor no respect for her anymore? And as governor, she's trying to do some things that are not in the progressive wheelhouse and they have no interest in cooperating. And so that is a very interesting question. It's interesting for the special session, but is that going to be the shape of things to come in the upcoming regular session as well? So we, we'll have to wait and see how that does. But you know, here, here in a couple of days, we will maybe get an indication about how that relationship between the progressives and the governor is going to go.
A couple of other things to address relating to issues in the last few weeks. PNM has announced that it's applying to the PRC for a 23% rate increase over the years, 2025 and 2026. Obviously not a done deal, but PNM is saying that they need higher utility rates in order to pay for the Energy Transition Act. No surprise for us. Has not been very widely reported, but it was in the Albuquerque Journal a few weeks ago. So get ready potentially to pay higher electricity bills if you're in PNM's service area. If not, if the PRC says no, then you've got to consider how long they can go on bearing the costs of the ETA without actually making their money back and, you know, investing in all the power lines and all the infrastructure that's going to be needed in order to make this very ambitious transition to so-called renewable energy. So any thoughts on that?
Well, back when the Energy Transition Act was being put forth. The issue was raised, do we put something in there that would limit rate increases? And the people putting forth the Energy Transition Act says, said that renewables are so cheap that we won't ever, that will never be a problem. And PNM was, and PNM from the very beginning, and I want to, I want to say that I don't think this is necessarily, I'm not saying what they did was a good thing, but they, they were always very careful to say that the Energy Transition Act would keep rates, rates lower than they would have been otherwise. Well, that's a lot like the federal government. Instead of having 10% growth in a program, cutting a programs, but or raising a program's budget 9% and calling that 1% a cut. So yeah, so we, there's a lot, there's a lot that will happen and there's a lot going on in the energy, particularly the electric size writ large as well. It's tough to get things built. There's a shortage of labor, costs are escalating. We're getting to the point where in more and more places, we're having these reliability risks go forward. We have fires, there's a lot happening, but one thing about it is, are rates likely to go up over the next decade? Are they likely to stay relatively flat or go down? I think this is a good indication. Get ready. This is not the last increase that they're going to be asking for, in my opinion.
No, absolutely not. Everything the left doesn't like is a power grab. And while I appreciate Senator Bill Tallman coming on to our show a while back, he wrote in the Albuquerque Journal and a few other, including Secretary of State Maggie Toulouse Oliver have written and stated publicly that, oh, the idea of eliminating the runoff requirements in Albuquerque elections is a power grab.
By who? I guess what I would say. So okay, fine. Who's grabbing the power and who's losing the power?
Right. The people who win the majority of the votes and don't have a runoff election, which will likely, at least recently, we've seen that the runoff has a vastly lower turnout of voters to the point where the person say in a four-way race for a city council seat, you eliminate the lower two voters receiving, receiving votes. And they still get fewer votes to win in that two-way race because of the lower turnout. So plus you're spending a lot of money. Now, Mayor Keller vetoed the bill and we will see if Albuquerque City Council can override that. They're on their kind of summer break right now, so they'll have to deal with this when they come back in August. But it's, it, it's just so funny and it's kind of indicative of the way current political debates are, especially vis a vis the US Supreme Court is. If a decision goes against the liberal groups or liberal mindset, it's automatically seen as some power grab by illegitimate power grab by conservatives. And I just don't get it, you know, we've 40% or lower threshold, just winner take all. Whoever gets the plurality of the votes. I mean, I, I think that they are all legitimate ways to win a race, whether it's city council or mayor. It just sets up a situation where it is more likely, slightly more likely that a conservative or Republican, because they don't have partisan races at the city of Albuquerque level, that they win a race. And heaven forbid that that would ever happen in the city of Albuquerque. So.
Well, and then Paul, as we've talked, it's maybe a little more likely that you would get one conservative candidate in two or three or four shades of moderate to progressive candidates more on the left. So does that make it anti-democratic? Does that make a power grab? You know, evidently depending on who you talk to, you know, this is, this is one of those issues that I'm not sure there's any purity, one way or the other. But yeah, there has certainly been Democrat politicians that have called it out as if this were some pure constitutional issue that they have the total right answer for. So interesting.
And finally, citizens of Las Cruces beware, City Council at their meeting last night, Monday evening said that they are going to, or voted to put a GRT rate increase, a rather massive increase on voters' ballots this November. Taking the city's current GRT from 8.0625% and tacking on 0.5625%. So a rather massive increase in the GRT down in Las Cruces. And boy, I can say that Rio Grande Foundation will engage in this particular issue and that we feel very strongly that this is a bridge way too far for a variety of reasons in terms of this particular proposal. Obviously the state of New Mexico is awash in money to the extent that there are questions over what some of these policies that they would like to, you know, do public safety and this, that, and the other infrastructure. A bunch of stuff that I, I have a hunch I could find room in the Las Cruces city budget to pay for all these things. But yeah, this is going to be on November's ballot and Las Cruces, Donaena County have moved considerably to the left in recent years. While this is a regressive policy, because the GRT is a regressive tax. This, you know, is another opportunity, albeit on a local scale, to stem the tide of so-called progressive policies. And boy, a big, big tax increase there on the ballot this fall in Las Cruces.
Yeah, that will be an interesting one to watch. And boy, I would, I would have to see some pull in to prognosticate. You would hope the citizens of Las Cruces would know that that's not a good idea. But we will have to wait and see. And it's regressive, it hurts the poor more, it hurts business and drives them across the border to Texas to do business. What could go wrong?
Absolutely. All right, Wally, we'll leave it there. Thanks for listening to this week's episode. Find all episodes at tippingpointsnm.com or at the Rio Grande Foundation's YouTube channel. Subscribe to the show at Apple, Stitcher, or tell Google Home to play Tipping Point, New Mexico. Thanks to Path3 Marketing for producing this show.